All right, we good? All right, then we're gonna call the December ninth, two thousand and twenty four Select Board Meeting to order. We have the amendments to the agenda for tonight.
Just the date at the top.
The date at the top, good problem. Um, I guess before we get into things too, I just should have done that last meeting, but I just wanted to acknowledge the passing of Stan Waltz uh last month. He was the CEO of Newcastle from, I think around two thousand and eight to around two thousand and fifteen. Um, and then he stepped in and helped us out when we needed the help when um when Ken passed. So um we owe a lot to Stan, so I just want to acknowledge that before we get going. All right, uh, let's see, do you have a motion to approve the minutes of November twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four? By Tor, seconded by Ben, did anyone have any comments or questions on it? All right, then all in favor? Right, passes for nothing, one absence. Uh, let's see, do you have any public comments on items not on the agenda tonight? Gee, I get to go first, would you state your name and where you live?
Okay, I'm Katharina Kewen and I live in Newcastle, just down the street. Um, and I was at the meeting where the uh consultants, engineering traffic consultants came. And I was at, I was very impressed because I made me realize how complicated an issue that is. Um, and they explained a lot of things and uh uh I I realized that it was a very complex issue. Uh, recently put out a survey uh to the public, I don't know how much of the residents got it. But having been at the meeting and then reading the survey, which was similar to the survey that they asked for at the meeting. Uh, if you weren't at the meeting, it was not very clear.
The sur- the survey?
The survey.
Okay.
And I would ask that you, when you uh weigh the survey against other information, that you keep in mind that if you, I was at the meeting and it was not easy. So anyone who wasn't at the meeting, how they could really give a clear and informed opinion, I would find very difficult. In addition, one of the options uh had uh, there was an area that had two options. And in the first diagram, the street went west and east and west, and on the second one, it went north and south. So if you, I mean, I kept looking at it and looking at it and saying, what's going on here? And I was at the meeting. Uh, so what I'm here to say is, I hope that you don't take the results from that survey uh too heavily. Because I can't imagine that it could truly reflect all the information that one would need to take in to make a informative decision.
Kevin, you you thought the questions were difficult to understand? I haven't, I haven't done it yet, so I need to.
No, the 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 questions were the same. But there are so many issues that the questions were superficial compared to the complexity of of the problem. Um, at the simple, I mean, at the meeting, they talked about a roundabout uh here in front of the Lincoln Home. Uh, and then they just briefly talked about the added expense of that roundabout. So that, you know, kind of went over that part, which is a big issue. Uh, they talked about biking, the bike trails. And they said, well, we could put a little bike trail in here, but it doesn't start anywhere and it doesn't go anywhere. So if you're asking me, do I want a bike trail there? And I don't know that, how can I give an informed decision? So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
The survey does ask you to watch the video, and we did have recording here that night so that we could present it to the public. So I do hope residents will take up one watching part of or all of the video before filling out the survey.
Yeah, I'm just wondering to emphasize, and somehow, full text, you know.
Recommend that you watch it. Yeah.
So that you understand the context of the question.
And she's right, there was a lot more context in the conversation in the room than there is necessarily.
Yep, I think that will go.
And also, um, Colin has questions, you know.
Yeah.
You know.
Yep.
Make that
Oh, yeah, I've been fielding several of them, so.
So that's just a, just a general comment and, okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Wanted to tell us who you are.
I'm Wonder Willcock, on Dyneback Road in Newcastle. Um, my comment is that um with all the new um tax increasing that went on, a lot of people's taxes went up greatly. Um, and some not so much, but anyway, it doesn't matter. But years ago, we used to be able to go get the town report and you saw everybody's taxes. And I know that got stopped, I know the principle behind it got stopped because it costs a lot of money to to put that in the book and bind it and all that, so I get that. But I just would like to say that I think that information needs to be available to everybody that wants it. And if you guys could just have a paper copy stapled in the, you know, in the town hall that people could stop by and pick up. Because right now, it's kind of nice to, if you've got a piece of land that you're questioning why you've got taxed so much, if you can go look at somebody else's piece of land that's somewhat relevant. You know, it gives you a context as to why your taxes are maybe what they are and what they are.
You you, but you're familiar with using the tax map on on our website?
I am, but is the tax amounts on there?
Yeah, there's a, there's a link for a tax card.
Okay.
And you can, you can.
I don't know, I'm just thinking, I I I like to have things in my hand and look at them, and I I know, you know, in the past, we we did it. Now it's been a lot of years, I'm aging myself, it's been a lot of years since I've done that. But I just think it would be really nice if that could be available.
The the entire commitment book is online, we can print out copy and have it in the office, that's awesome. It's two hundred and seventy pages long, that's the, that's the issue.
Yeah. Yeah, but it is on, we, yes, we can have one. But it it is online for anyone who wants to look at it, I'm I'm on there cruising around all the time just to see who owns what, but it it's.
To be honest with you, when I go on the town website, I don't find it user friendly, and maybe because it's just not a user friendly website.
So this one's easy, I agree, I can't find things sometimes. But this one's easy, you just get on the main page and then there's some circles and one of them is maps.
Okay.
And it's click on that and you get the.
I looked at it to look up like, you know, like where, what number my piece of land is or something, but I haven't gone any further. Are you talking about that same map?
Yep.
Okay.
Down there is the.
Yep.
Values.
Okay, yep, it's getting a lot of information on each parcel property. Okay, thank you, yep.
Yeah, yeah. Love to. Kevin Brady, how you doing?
Again.
Pretty good, uh, as the snow removal contract, did that run out this spring?
It is this.
This is the final year of the contract.
Yeah, and uh, this is the final year, twenty twenty four?
Oh, the downtown, the downtown, yeah.
Yep, yep, and so, uh, did any, so we got a, we have a snow removal company that will remove the snow now? You hired somebody?
It's the same one we've been using, because it's, we're still in the same contract.
Same contract, we 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 didn't, the contract didn't run out at all on the road, snow removal?
Downtown.
Downtown it run out.
No, downtown runs out.
After this.
After this winter, and our general roads one.
Is another five-year contract with a uh option to terminate after three.
The other one, right, which, but that one just goes into effect this year for the first time.
You just approved it this year.
You just approved it, so that didn't go out the bids, that one then?
No.
No, it did not.
I I was wondering why, uh, why didn't that go up the bid, you spoke?
I I thought we covered all of this.
Uh, I I haven't heard.
For the meeting, we discussed it?
We, yeah, we we did discuss it in, um, oh, gosh, I don't know what meeting it was. It didn't go up to bid because, look at what Damascada went up to bid, they're paying more than we are. Um, we just, we just felt that things being as they are, it wasn't going to be a better deal to go up to bid.
Okay, so now, now we seem to have a problem to remove some snow.
So we'll cover all this tomorrow night in our meeting, but yeah, no, removing, we cannot, right now, we cannot dump the downtown snow that we always have to get rid of downtown, we cannot dump it where we've always dumped it, uh, at the bridge over Bifertals. Um, the property owner won't allow us to dump it there.
Yeah, but I didn't think Newcastle, they've had a permit for that anyway.
Yes, we have.
They did, yeah. So so now you signed a contract for this five-year contract.
No, that's a different one.
Uh, well, downtown one.
The downtown one, we didn't sign a contract, we're working under an old contract still.
Okay, and and we got an issue with with the snow.
With what to do with the snow that's from downtown, yes.
Yeah, and and downtown, where in the hell is downtown?
It's little, it's um, it's our snow plow for downtown.
Basically from um, the Public House to the Bridge. Down Glidden Street.
Just down the hill.
Pump Street, that also includes the snow plowing for this building, that includes the snow plowing for the uh town hall. So the snow is removed from the parking spaces in both locations under that contract.
So so uh, so what what's the issue now, uh, how are you gonna solve this problem, you thinking?
Snow blower.
What's that?
A snow blower.
The the town of Newcastle is looking to to purchase a snow blower?
No.
No?
The the contractors got a snow blower that can blow snow over the bridge from the Newcastle side. So that's the only solution we could come up with, it's way more expensive to truck it to another location, we did that a number of years ago.
So the town of Newcastle is not gonna buy any piece of equipment?
No.
No.
No, we don't want it.
So this, this is either an amendment to the current contract to have the snow, to have the contractor purchase and operate this piece of equipment on our behalf. Or we will revise our current contract, you know, negate our current contract and put a new contract in place. Or again, the five-year with the, after three years potential for termination. Because the board has asked me to look into whether or not it's time for Newcastle to have its own Public Works Department. In part because you're seeing those costs continue to rise, and is there, is there a point at which the financial burden is better to have it, where we have our own crews and our own staff and can manage the projects and needs of the town of Newcastle?
Then you got to clear me up on this meeting tomorrow night at the Great Salt Bay. There's one at six and there's one at six thirty.
No, it's at six thirty.
It it's at six thirty?
Yes, sir.
And and what's that one gonna be about?
Well, there's two, there's two uh warrant articles related to amending the harbor management ordinance and then the joint shellfish ordinance happening at the middle school. Uh, we're doing it in in tandem with uh Damascada to address both of those items because they're joint, they're joint articles. Those are mostly cleanup language. The fourth article, so first article is picking your moderator, then it's a harbor, then it's joint shellfish. Then we'll go into uh modifying the shoreland ordinance, again, we did it in June, we have to make some small changes uh conditional from the deep, from the Forest State, Forestry Department, whatever one that one is. Um, to remove language about timber, because we passed that back to the state, we're not doing that anymore. Timber harvesting responsibilities of managing those, that's all the state. But we still have language in a table that should have been removed.
But that's.
That's a very small one, and that's, yeah, sorry.
Session, yep.
After those two articles that we were discussing related to um harbor and shellfish that are jointly with Damascada, our community will get up and move over to the library to finish off a few other items.
What what's in few other items?
That's this shoreline piece that I was just talking about, forgot to say we're stepping away.
Yeah.
Uh, then it is, um, all right, I did pull it up. Well, there's this article fi- article five, which is the solar array system for the fire station. Putting on a, uh, looking to put in, using some of our unassigned fund balance to put some solar on here to offset the cost of all electricity in Newcastle. All right, not all of Newcastle, sorry, all of the Newcastle facilities. Then Article Six, this is the downtown snow removal. Um, there's links in this memo, which is online, if you go to our, the calendar, click on uh December tenth, it takes you to all the links, show you everything we've talked about related to this item since October twenty eighth. October twenty eighth, November twelfth, and November twenty fifth, before finally coming to the decision that our our best situation to deal with any accumulation of snow in the downtown is to put it over the so- the southwest side of the bridge downtown. That requires this larger, basically um, snow blower to do so. What the hundred and fifteen is for is for the entire snow season, monthly payment to the contractor, have that piece of equipment, his additional staff, the additional um front loader to move it around with. That's, that is can, what the board has decided to do at the November twenty fifth meeting was to cancel uh the sidewalk here on on River Road and use some of that money, the hundred and fifteen to move it into operations to pay for this, for this year. That's what those six articles are.
Just just to remove the snow, there's there's no equipment that we're gonna.
Own at the end of that? No.
No.
That's just snow removal.
Yep.
And and the risk that he carries, the contractor would carry for maintaining that piece of equipment on our behalf.
Uh, does a, does a state have anything to do with it? Uh, that's a state road in through there.
The state has to do with both our use, our using the right of way, which we've got permission for, and then the D E P has to give the final say to dump that snow there.
But the state lets us pay plowing all their roads.
Though, the state aid roads, we don't plow, we don't plow Route One.
No, no.
And 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 Main Street is technically plowed by a separate contract, which happens to be Hega. But um, our responsibility is all the snow that gets pushed onto the sidewalks, if we want to have a clean downtown, it's our responsibility to have a contract to have somebody remove that snow.
Yeah.
And I still need somebody to remove the snow from both the town office and the fire station. So that's what the, initially the fifty-four was. Uh, the argument here is that this is outside the scope of the contract, so this last year of the contract, I I came to the board with no solution, literally, no solution. And we've batted around three meetings now to get to a place where we are today.
I I know years ago that uh, down down there, the bridge, they only cleared one side of the sidewalk. Remember that? Yep, but that's gonna be open both sides and.
Not when they're pushing the snow over the edge, they'll be sending pedestrian traffic across the street at the crosswalk that's in front of um Glidden Street. If there's any pedestrians walking on the south side of that sidewalk and they get to there, they'll be sent across the street while they're moving snow over the.
So so the bottom line is money is a hundred and fifteen thousand?
For the year, yes.
Yep.
The season, yep.
And that that's a total different contract, it's gonna be run out next spring.
Yes.
Yep. Yep, thank you.
Great, great, thank you. All right, anybody else?
Well, I guess I don't need to say that all again tomorrow.
You will.
You will, yeah.
I uh.
Excuse me, sir, who are you?
Roger Willcox, I live at uh, not uh, Dyneback Road in Newcastle.
Thanks, Roger.
Um, I I've been doing a lot of investigation, you know, what I can, and as far as I'm concerned, you know, um, for the contract, he he got a a big raise this spring. Um, and then he's already being paid, you know, for fifty-four thousand for the downtown. And, you know, he he's got a contract to remove the snow from the town of Newcastle. So as far as I'm concerned, we don't buy his trucks, we don't buy his Sanders, we don't buy his plows and his wings, we don't buy his loaders. So why, if he needs a snow blower to blow snow, that's up to him to to provide that and and not charge us, I mean, he's already under contract to remove this snow. So he should, he should do his job for what he's hit this for. And I I, for me, I I can't, I can't justify this hundred and fifteen thousand, because really, he could use a loader as far as I'm concerned to dump that snow over the railing, he could, he could use a front-end loader, he's already got one.
That's true, but the D O T said no.
D O T?
Yes, because of the, there's a.
Worried about the bridge.
Well, they're worried about the guardrail, and then there's also an outflow uh line right there on the other side of it.
Yep.
So the only way we can use that right away is to technically blow the snow.
What about the snow blow, where's that snow gonna go? That could go on them same pipes you're talking about.
That's what the D O T offered.
Well, so so I I'm saying that that's, that's all running good, but he's, he's under contract. And if he needs that piece of equipment, he should get it, and and he should live up to his contract here, because he's well paid to plow our snow, and no more snow than we've got, thirty inches of snow last year we got. And and this budget here, it's seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, almost three quarters of a million. But plow their snow, I, this is ridiculous, it's ludicrous. I mean, I, I think it's highway robbery, what he's charging plow their snow, I really do, and I I for one, I cannot support this, I I just cannot. And you're gonna have to have one heck of an explanation tomorrow night to change my mind, because this spring, you got a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar raise, just just for the contract over his previous one, almost two hundred thousand, and now he wants a hundred and fifteen more. It's outrageous, and we should not allow that.
I agree.
Anybody else have any? Yep, come on down. I mean, this is stuff to bring up tomorrow too, the meeting.
Don't worry.
I'm not Russell, not Newcastle. When it comes to Hega in this town, I don't know what hold he's got on this town, but when we, anything, all your other towns go to bid, and you pick up the Lincoln County News, and time and time again, Hega gets outbid. But in Newcastle, you don't even have to bid? There's something wrong with that. Now, the man's get, the man's got one A state contract, so if he can't plow them sidewalks and work with his own crew and get it done, there's a problem there. One A is salt priority, now he's plowing twenty-seven South for the state, that's salt priority. He don't even own a salt building. Where's all this salt come from? The only one owned a salt building is this town right here. Well, wouldn't a load of salt because of that building, who says where it's going? You've got all these employees going during the storm, you're doing packing lots, you're going twenty-seven South, you're going Route One through Damascada. Where's all this salt going? How much of this salt is Newcastle paying for?
I don't, I think we're paying, we're paying for it, getting.
We're paying for plenty of it.
Uh, our own, on our own.
And who's keeping, who's keeping their finger on what goes where?
I think you have to have a trust.
When I, when the contractor is also the road commissioner, it's like the fox watching the hen house.
Well, just remember, we probably get the best plowed roads around here, you've driven through some of the other towns when we had the snowstorm.
Best plow crew around here?
Best plowed roads.
Not Newcastle, do you?
Best plowed roads around here.
But, so. I mean, not Newcastle, I have a problem with this plowing. Especially when he, he takes my fences down all the time, don't worry about him. Call him up, he won't even call you back. They say, well, make out a paper, send it.
Arthur, you said Route twenty-seven?
But I mean, when when a man don't even have to, we we just hopped off the road, and you all know where it is. Got two houses on it over half a mile, and we hot-topped him, he's got two houses on it, and we got roads up north the next spring. Passon Avenue, Pata Day in that north, that, when it's muddy, you can't even drive on. But we're hot-topping a road, a good gravel road, there's no problem, but two houses. I mean, who makes that decision?
We all do.
Yeah. You've got, you've got a company that don't have to put in a bid because the president of it is our road commissioner. Now, to me, there's a conflict of interest there.
Sure.
And as far as the snow goes, for years, I've been, I don't know how many of you remember, but for years, Chester Rice, he piled it up all night long and piled it on the corners, all, all down through Main Street. And then loaded it all with a backhoe loader in the morning.
Right, do you know how much it cost us when we had to pay to load it in trucks and truck it out of downtown?
And we're only talking a sidewalk. For how long? From Rice Corner to the bridge?
I think it's all the snow, it's not just the sidewalks, it's.
Despite dumping over that bridge, we paid, we paid Hega to haul snow to knock Newcastle and dump it up to the old dump.
Yep, we paid a lot of money for that.
Well, why couldn't we dump it right at the old dump where the sand pile is?
We didn't have a permit to do that.
Why don't we have one? Why don't somebody make one up?
There's not enough room there to do it.
What do you mean there ain't enough room there?
Not with our sultans and the.
Sand.
You dump it overboard and it goes.
E P won't let us.
The, 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 the bank, uh, that.
It, because it, the, have you walked down that bank? It's, there's a lot trash exposed there.
Over it, you don't have to walk down over it.
No, they won't let us, it's that, that needs some remediation.
Tried.
Yeah, yes.
You have.
I've looked at every option for.
And they won't let you.
They will not let us.
By the D P, but they can dump it off of the bridge.
Yes, it can be blown off the bridge under a certain program, yes.
Well, maybe this town done the wrong program then. But when, when it comes to Hega, there, there's a big problem here somewhere. I mean, it looks to me like he's got a free pin and he's breaking this town.
You, you need to come to some more meetings and, and understand a lot of the decisions that go into.
I don't have to come to meetings to stand, understand what's going on here.
I guess if you do.
I did, I watched Hega's trucks go by the house the other morning. I worked for the state of Maine out of it, twenty four years, I've spread a lot of salt. I bet you there ain't a one of his trucks that is calibrated. Cuz I can tell you, watching the salt come out of that truck go by the house, he's spreading a lot more than he needs to. And if them trucks ain't calibrated, how does he know what salt's going where? Um, that's a question you guys ought to be asking him.
Fair enough.
Taking notes, Arthur.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, we have anybody else with the public comments on items on the agenda tonight? All right, then we will move on to planning board appointment. This is a yay.
Kevin, do you wanna?
Uh, actually, Ben had the first conversation with Tyler, I'll let him, if you don't mind.
Not at all, um, Tyler Tibbetts, who's a real estate agent, um, lives over on the Mills Road, uh, met with him about an unrelated thing and kinda got talking about stuff, and I mentioned that we're looking for folks to, um, join the planning board to round it out, and then I think you have a subsequent conversation with him, and then I went back, I said, you seriously consider? He said absolutely, so.
Yeah, and I met with him this morning too.
Yeah, wonderful.
Yep.
Very excited to have another member, we, that will bring us up to six, um, so we're still, we still need two more.
Two, yeah.
Well, for me to leave.
Oh, for the, uh, for the chair, yeah, you have an empty seat and a chair. All right, well, nice work.
Your motion to appoint Tyler Tibbetts to the planning board then?
Yes, I'm.
Move by Ben.
Second.
Second invite, Tor.
And I, and I mentioned, uh, I gave a little blurb about him in the manager report as well.
Yep, his background, yep.
Good.
Good, all in favor? I do, five B, town office hours policy. All right, Kevin, why are we changing this?
Uh, as a request of staff, we've had a total of, um, two people visit us in the eleven times we've held, held the extra hours after hours. Um, I do, we have found that the seven thirty opening has had a real positive benefit. A lot more people coming in before they take off for work. Um, and with the dark time of this time of the year, uh, my staff are not as comfortable with staying till six thirty or six o'clock. So I'm curious if the board would be mending the town office hours policy to be, uh, the four thirty close.
So, only two people have come in after four thirty in all this time?
Correct. We've been doing it twice a month since July, no, Ju- July.
July, I think.
Yes, July, we've been doing it twice a month since July, and so that'd be eleven times we've done this. I mean, the upside is I get to hang out with a staff person till six, but.
But are we cutting, uh, an hour and a half off essentially the work week?
You are.
Yeah.
For one person twice a week, so three hours for somebody, okay. Or some, one and a half for one person or the other.
And that, that alternates who that person is.
Correct.
Yeah.
Let's say approach I've taken.
No one's using, utilizing it. If, if everybody was there, I'd say, great, they're getting a lot of work done with no bothering.
Well, that does happen, like, the time is used, it's just, um, you know, I think the intent was there to be open for the public after normal work hours.
Somebody have any thoughts on that?
It's not being utilized, it's not being utilized, I guess I'm just concerned that we're cutting back on.
Getting hours.
We're cutting back on hours, the, the town's not getting out of sync for it's my concern.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I don't see any reason to make, say, no, you gotta stay there, cuz there's no justification to stay there.
See, our old hours were eight to four?
Eight to four, right, now we're seven thirty to four.
So an extra hour, four days a week.
Yep.
Okay.
But then we took those, what we did is we took those four hours that were on Fridays.
Right.
And we spread them out across those other days.
Right, so it's still the same number of hours.
We're just doing an extra three hours per month now.
Right.
Than we were even before this.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I, I get it.
All right, does anybody have any thoughts? And so, I've motioned to approve the proposed amendment, amend?
Oh. You know, I type these, uh, oddly hours.
The, the proposed amendment to the town office hours policy, as presented, moved by Tor. Seconded by Ben, I'm all in favor. Sure, great, passes for nothing. They probably didn't back to the top of this. All right, and this, um, finished business, five C, the December twenty third select board meeting. I think many of us will be gone.
Well, yeah, I mentioned it in my.
I like it, in your long tenure here.
I was having some fun again, tired, so. In my long tenure, the Newcastle Select Board has always canceled its second meeting in December. Granted, I've only been here for one full year, one full December so far, and, uh, last year, the second meeting fell directly on December twenty fifth, which happened to also be a day off for the castle staff. So, I know December twenty third is not technically a day off in the office, but, uh,
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys wanna cancel your meeting.
I won't be here.
I'm not gonna be here.
So we're already down two people.
Chair and the waste chair, get me.
Then it's the person with the most, uh, time on the board.
Tom, that's you.
I'll be here.
You want on the meeting?
Not, not particularly.
Is there anything you think is gonna be, uh, important that we have to deal with for the end of the year?
Um, potentially, but I can ask.
Nothing on the radar, or?
No, nothing on, nothing on the immediate radar, no. I mean, the contract amendment needs to be approved or agreed upon, but, um, I think there's at least a good faith effort here to take care of business.
Uh, so then it would be.
January fif- thirteenth before your next meeting.
Five.
Yep.
So if something came up, we can do an, uh,
Special meeting.
An emergency meeting.
This is a five week.
Gap, yeah.
This is a five week month.
Right, so there's that extra end of.
We shift it to the following month.
The sixth?
So there'd be the, the, okay.
I'd have to zoom in for that meeting.
I'll be back.
Uh, yeah, I'll be here.
Cuz you still have another, you're still on a two week for the next one.
Right. I was, I mean, I'm just worried about end of the year stuff, it's always something.
I mean, if, if it's a short meeting and there isn't much in it, great, but if there's something that we need to take care of, like, might have something on the books.
So we'd have to notice that meeting by the twenty third. Right?
Seven days before.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, I like that idea, Tom, why don't we just cancel the twenty third and, and put a temporary placeholder on the thirtieth, we'll know by um, the twenty third whether or not we need to have a meeting, you're not gonna be here.
We, we'll know by the end of next week.
We can actually mute.
Yeah, I know you can. You have before.
We have before.
So you're gonna be here?
I'll be here, yeah, I'll be back.
I'm, I'm out of state until the first.
Oh, wait, wait, what time's my flight get in? Nope, I won't be back, my flight gets into Portland at eight o'clock at night.
Well, even if it's just to approve warrants.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the business needs to keep going, five weeks seems like a long stretch.
Does seem like a long stretch, that's for sure.
Yes.
So, I mean, I can zoom.
Well, let's, let's see.
When are you back, Tor?
Um, I think we're leaving on the first, so.
Okay.
Yeah, the first.
Yeah, I just look, actually, my flight doesn't get into Portland until almost midnight, so I won't be, and I'll be on a plane, I can't zoom.
I'll be at a Lego Land Hotel.
I can zoom in from, uh, to be honest, I'm not exactly sure where it is, but I think it's in New York. Trust me, I'm not making the.
Not, wouldn't be your choice.
Yeah.
All right, well.
So, tentative, Lou, it wasn't set up then, and.
December thirtieth.
There might only be three people, I don't know, we're just scheduled.
I don't think we have, that's what I'm saying, we don't have to decide right now, we just have to notice it by the twenty third.
Yeah, okay. We need to have a motion.
Cancel the twenty third?
Can't, cancel the twenty third meeting.
Yep. And you can call a special.
Right.
Cancel the meeting? Cancel your regular meeting.
I, I'll move, we cancel the December twenty third select board meeting.
Tom will second it, okay, all in favor? I pass this for nothing. Thirty is there, we need it.
Yep.
All right, then, moving on to new business, six A, the fish ladder and related facilities agreements. Great. So, they're short and sweet, which is nice.
They are, and, uh, in fact, both Jim Brinkler and Bob.
Bark.
Bart, thank you.
Barkalove.
Barkalove, I'll, I will get it at some point, Bob, I promise.
It's the, it's because he lives in New, Nobleboro.
Nobleboro, he's not even one of our residents.
You know.
Yeah.
You can't remember names of people outside of Newcastle.
Only a few, my wife's name, I remember her.
Okay, good.
Um, so we have been back and forth for quite a while now, and I know the Damascada Mills, uh, Fish Restoration.
Fish Ladder.
Fish Ladder Restoration entity, which serves under the, currently serves under the, um, Nobleboro Historical Society. Is looking to create their own five oh one C three and focus solely on raising money and doing work to maintain the fish ladder. So there's that one component, and then it's a question of, well, because the facility is owned by Newcastle and Damascada.
No.
Sorry, wow, Noble, Nobleboro and Damasc- and Nobleboro and.
Newcastle, and it's in Damascada.
Just come up front, please.
And it's in Damascada Mills.
It's in Damascada Mills, it's owned by Newcastle, the towns of Nobleboro, which is not in Damascada, not to confuse anybody.
Right.
Um, I did provide quite a bit of background on this, but it came from my context, and I know that Jim and Bob, I don't know if you saw what I wrote. And if you had any corrections, I'm all for it, but I was just trying to get some information out there for the public to understand. There really is a need for two arrangements or two agreements. One that says the towns will partner with the Fish Ladder Organization, all for now. And I'm gonna get.
Nonprofit.
The non, nonprofit, to make sure that we assist them in, in ensuring that that fish ladder exists in perpetuity. They will do some of the heavy lifting for us, but we're there to support them when they need it. The second agreement is really between the two towns and recognizing our biggest money generator for that is the fish ladder or fish harvest, which wouldn't exist, there wasn't a fish ladder. But we still need to maintain that facility, and we need to ensure, uh, safe passage from, you know, one end to the other. Uh, I know that the Fish Ladder Organization has done a lot of work to raise money for replacing or fixing the the ladder itself, but also fixing some of the, and replacing some of the, uh, walkways along it. Some of the other walkways are much more substantial, and we're gonna take a little bit more funding. And if that's a mix of, hopefully, we can cover most of that with the monies that each of the towns has, and that, that the, the, um, the organization will help support, but I think that there's, there's an important piece of this that hasn't really been functioning the way it should. And that's why there's a, an L life committee, L I Fish Committee, where there's two members of Newcastle on it, there's two members of Nobleboro on it, and our fish agent, who's essentially contracted to ensure that we meet all the regulations with the state. And, uh, the, the the operations when there's the harvest are done correctly and the money split correctly. Ken, I, more or less, okay. Okay, I finally understand what this is, and I'm glad everybody followed along with me as best they could. So now, what we're trying to do is put an agreement in place. I have forwarded this to our attorney, he was unable to review this before I would put the packet together, he's unable to do it today, he says he'll look at it on Wednesday to verify, there are, when you use the term interlocal agreement, there are some uh, state law or state statute requirements about interlocal agreements, so I want him to, I probably insert some other severability or other terms that need to be in there, but this is the gist of what we're looking to do. And, you know, you see it tonight, um, I wanna get your reaction, and I wanna be able to go back maybe on the thirtieth, and have you approve the agreement for me to sign, or you could have me sign. I, I think I'd rather you see it first. So, that's what's there tonight. Jim or Bob, do you wanna jump in on anything?
Hope to be here with, answering questions if there is any, anything more I can add, but I don't need to take up a lot of time if everyone's clear on it, I the fish ladder's got a couple hundred years of history here.
Since eighteen.
Most of which has not been written down.
Eighteen oh seven, something like that.
Oh, son, yeah, I think it was declared that it was supposed to be built by, in eighteen oh three or something, and it's done, yeah.
Yep.
So then, we're constantly faced with, uh, maintenance issues because we have a water dependent area. So, uh, in the fish ladder itself, those, those, oh, true. They have needs too, they want, want to, uh, repair, basically. So we wanna sort of combine, if we can, those needs all at the same time. You know, you know, if they can help us with some funding, they will, if we can help them, that we're funding, we can. Uh, we don't wanna expend all of our funds. We don't wanna leave ourselves bare, our account. We wanna always leave something in there. Um, so, and again, our biggest problem is we never know how many fish are coming in. We don't ever know how many fishermen are coming. And our gross revenues varies quite a bit from year to year. So, we've gotta try and balance uh, our funds, and that's why, why we're working with these guys, is that we both contribute something. And then we get these projects done. Look at all and see what you think, um, is there anything you wanna add to, see Kevin? You think we need, but we wanna work together with, well, no, we're, 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 remember, two hundred years, so. They likewise will get the same documents. And, uh, we're trying to get as much input from them as we can now. We're trying to get as much input from them as we can now. We end up with. Two. Hopefully, you know, decent documents to deal with.
Man, I thought it was short and sweet, so I don't have anything else to. Okay, my, my only question is about the appointments.
Yep.
Will that be next meeting?
I'm looking for suggestions. I mean, the, the, the thing is, is if you invite two Noble Borough, if you make it select board focused. Committee. And it's two members of Newcastle Select Board on this committee, and there's two members of Noble Borough. They have three member. Select Board, so as soon as you make two of them.
Yeah.
They're at quorum and therefore it's a Noble Borough Select Board meeting whenever the. Committee needs. So I. I would suggest that maybe identify one select board member who might want to work and or another member of the public. In the way that we sometimes have trouble finding. Members of the public interested in serving on, so. Um. I, yeah, it would be made up of two members of each community and official agent. Say, and it's currently Jim.
I say I nominate Rufus.
And Joel.
And Joel, there we go.
Uh, I think this is great. I'm actually, I'm kind of excited about this because um. It's been two hundred years of uh. A good handshake agreement, but it's always nice to just. You know, formalize what we've always done.
Right.
And uh.
It's more for. People in the future.
Yeah, exactly.
It's the next two hundred years.
If it's written down somewhere, they can look back at it. No, that's how they did it. I like it. I really do.
Isn't Mark Becker technically an official agent?
Uh, this year he is, yes.
This year, okay. Right. Jim's our resident.
Expert.
On it. You know, he's on the committees. I'm, I'm good with it being at least one, if not two. General problem. I don't know that it has to be a select.
So is that Jim then?
Yeah.
Jim, do you, are you wanting to say that's a committee rep?
Great, excellent.
Great, you got one, so you need to appoint somebody else.
We could see somebody, Joel was way into this.
He was.
Yeah.
He was actually excited about it.
I can ask him before. And I can add this to the thirtieth. Uh, I would also like to ask that, um, I looked to schedule a time for the board to actually go down and walk the site. Talk about some of the improvements that are really needed, so that when the committee meets and makes a recommendation back to you. You have an idea of what some of those concerns are and are ready to make that decision.
Yep.
Again, this is money that's been collected over the years from selling fish during the run. And that money has been earmarked specifically for repairs there, not something we. Have had to go to the taxpayer. So ideally. We never run into a situation where we depleted that fund and have to come back to the. Public for, for the, the property taxpayer to the money to repair it, but. This is where I think it's important the committee does its work to identify. Federal and state grants that can help keep that place alive and recognizing that there's a couple of towns and then. And then another organization can help support those efforts.
I just have one more word for you, it's, I think, the second whereas.
Yep.
I think that. Raveling in.
Okay.
Everything else. Good. Oh, yeah, eighteen oh seven's even in the document.
Yeah, I put it in.
Excellent. It's close enough.
Close enough, right?
We don't need to do anything on this then.
If you don't want to. And you, you are authorized to have me sign after legal review.
What about the other?
We wouldn't meet until the appointment.
No, I mean, we. We, we are not gonna sign a document that we don't know if Noble Borough agrees to, right?
They were looking at it.
Right.
Right now, they. I'm not sure which. Documents they looked at, but they. The problem is, I don't know which is the. The final. Doc. Then. For us to give to them to look at.
Yeah.
The rule. That's the issue. We've gotta have. One. A final document or two final documents. That we, that you guys like. And. Something they like too.
Yeah. So I, I think it's more and more around. Drop that whereas, bring you back.
Yes.
Any, any changes that our attorney wants to see, and then you guys.
It's taken two hundred years.
Don't, yeah, what's another?
Business six B is an abandoned sailboat and dinghy and.
Well, come to find out the dinghy, I, I did, we finally did the final research and found the registration in it. And it does belong to somebody else. So that dinghy is not something we can negotiate the. Nine forty down with, unfortunately.
Did they come get their dinghy?
He did, and he got a little scolding for not having a dinghy sticker. On the boat.
And leaving it beyond the expiration date of the harbor. Useful use.
The docks are coming out this week. I think Wednesday in the rain, but at least it'll be fifty degrees out instead of last week when it was uh. My fingers would have froze trying to move those dock.
Alright, so. An abandoned sailboat.
Do, and I need your, I, I had said before, anytime I would look to use contingency, I'm gonna come to this board.
This is it.
This is the, yeah.
So it's about five grand?
Yes, it is.
And what do we have in contingency?
Fifty thousand. Roughly five thousand, that's what we damn is called. It is a, I am happy to request some help there, but also recognize that they do a lot of the work for us in terms of. Uh, they remove those docks at no expense to us. They put those docks in, they remove those docks, they store those docks. I think. I think we. I've had this conversation with the town manager.
Yeah.
Um. He wanted to do things like make it a reef. Out in the water, just set it out, so I didn't get a lot of.
I'm not sure about that.
Willingness to throw money at this, but I will ask again, see if they'd be willing to share some of the cost. But I just recognize they do a lot on our behalf as the harbor management, as the community that administers the harbor management. Ordnance. Technically, we should be paying for the docks to be put in and removed. Um, but they do that on, on, on our behalf, so I.
But I would guess that technically that was on our expense, we would be looking to share these expenses because they have the other committee, which I don't believe has. Expenses like that.
The shellfish committee? No, just the staffing.
Right.
Of their, they meet more regularly than Harbor Man, the Harbor Committee does.
But that doesn't tally what it does to, what it costs to put docks in and out and get rid of sailboats, obviously.
No, but we don't pay for the docks at all, you know, they do it.
No, I'm saying, if, if we had to pay for all of that, we'd be looking to share that.
Yes, we would.
Yes, ask. Ask Andy if he'll cover the haul, we'll cover the disposal.
I'll see what I can do. He just authorized me to use contingency to pay for it. I'll look to get reimbursed.
Well. How often does this come up?
This is the first time since nineteen ninety one we've had this situation.
Since ninety one?
Yep. According to our harbor master. I think the bigger issue is. The harbor master has required all boats to be removed from the harbor every year at. Wintertime. I think that was a time when. It froze. Right, and it. Doesn't necessarily now. But I think the risk was great enough to say. You know, harbor master says this is a potential hazard. It needs to be removed from the harbor. We should deal with it now before all the equipment gets packed up and sent to a warehouse for the winter. Cause then we, we're at the risk of mother nature. And I agreed with him and I, I took the initiative and I pulled the boat. It's sitting in. And that Newcastle Marine. Now is owned by RE Blood Boat Works. Um, it's sitting there. He does not want it, and he does not want it sitting on his property for long, but he said he'd, he'd let me, he'd let. He'd hold on to it for me for now until we, I had approval to dispose of it. So.
Rob, is it, is it as stinky? Is it as stinky as I heard it was?
It is very nice.
Yeah.
A lot of group.
Yeah. The guys that Kevin and I happened to run into, the guys that were packing it up to. Get ready to haul it out of the water, and they said that we're lucky we haven't had more of these, um. You get closer down to the ocean, some of those communities deal with it every year.
Yeah, there are towns that, you know, multiple derelict boats every year. And I think that. That's something. That you guys might wanna have on your radar as far as. Uh, whether you. The harbor community, committee needs to think about. Some regulation on. What goes in and what can be left and. Uh, I, I think the harbor master is doing the right thing by saying everybody has to be out for the winter, even if it's not gonna freeze. It forces people to not just leave a derelict boat there for. For years.
Yep.
Um, this boat, the, the pumps didn't work, so. A few more rainstorms, some who knows.
It might have been a reef.
Well, it, I mean, it's. It might have been an environmental disaster.
Yes.
Might have been a much bigger expense. Um. And also then a, a mooring that couldn't be used by someone else.
Right.
So, thank you, Rob, for jumping in and assisting me and getting that out of there.
Alright.
Yeah, and that was, we, uh. The. Guy that I used to truck boats, he was shutting down. After last week. It's not hauling boats because it's cold. So it was a bit urgent.
Alright, do I have a motion to authorize use of contingency for the boat haul and disposal of the abandoned sailboat?
Don't move.
By Ben. I'll, I'll second it. I'll second if I make. Um, do you have any other questions? There's nothing all in favor. I pass this for nothing. Hate it when we have things that we don't expect to, to spend money on. And things that aren't fun to spend money on.
Right.
Most things.
I mean, I did, I did offer, I said, if anybody wanted to buy a sailboat, they could.
They, they wanted it for free, they could have had it.
Alright.
Alright, new business six C deed and easements for M zero thirteen L zero one one. That. This is our. Um, quick claim.
Yes, in order to do, in order to do anything with CMP, um, we're gonna need to have. The town. Who automatic foreclosed on it, sign a deed to ourselves.
The last. Sentence above the signatures. We've got a, a B that has abandoned the word described. Stick that back in there.
A quick claim deed, describe, yeah.
Just above the signatures. Meaning in intending to retain.
Describe. Okay.
Yep, it's gonna be in there. Does anybody have any questions on that? It's just technically what we gotta do.
Yeah.
So.
Don't move that we offer as a town manager to.
Do you, do you have a property now?
We do in our automatic foreclosure, yes, sir.
Okay, and.
It's mine, you know. You gotta get your name, I mean, we know it, but.
Lewis Rector, twenty two Mills Road. Uh, so. You acquired the land and, and, and now that you, you can sign the easement. And from what I understand, that, that road isn't big enough, that's, that's gonna go up to Newcastle property for commercial vehicles. The, the road that you were gonna use, just where this pole is going. So this pole and this anchor is gonna be in Newcastle's right of way to get access to the field. Up by my house, so how are you, how are you planning to, to access that property?
Unclear at this time, but we're trying to assist with the housing project next to our property.
So you're gonna sign an easement blocking. Uh, the town's property. To. To make that. That uh. Housing development work, is that correct?
Yeah, there's also a challenge with a fire hydrant that's right there as well.
Well, I know, you gotta move the fire hydrant, but you, you said you didn't have room enough for. Commercial vehicles to go up there, but you can make a driveway, but now with that pole and anchor, you have, what you've done is you've blocked. The right of way going or block the driveway going up into that field. For vehicles.
Does the guy go? Up? The right of way or is it?
The guy will be, if you line that pole up, even if you put it right beside my property line.
Yeah.
And you look across to that pole, they're gonna set another pole to the right of it. That, which means that anchor will go out almost in the middle of that drive. Okay, cause it has to be fifteen feet from the base of that pole.
Heading back into the property.
Yep.
So I just. I just thought I'd ask that question before you block yourself. For the town's purpose.
Yep, you're right. Let me show we know.
You sign that. You sign that, that's what you've done. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. I think the intent right now is to sign the municipal. Deed. So that we can move forward with something. But I can always bring that back. Um, with easements. Have you signed those?
Oh, what, the right of way?
Twenty feet? It's not a right of way. It's not a right of way, it's part of the parcel.
You're sorry, yeah.
So, I mean, this. This has nothing to do with. Pole placement, so this is just the quick clean deed.
Correct, to formally register this information, so we can even update our own maps.
Yep.
On our trio.
Right. And then we can deal with the.
Location of the pole.
Yep.
When the, when I have utility easements ready, but as Louis says, that's something to consider.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Okay, um. There have a motion to approve and sign municipal quick clean deed.
Absolutely.
Get moved by Tor. Seconded by Ben. Alright, first up, all in favor of that? This is for nothing. Um. The utility easements, I'm gonna be having those on here.
You don't, I don't, I don't have those yet. I haven't seen anything from CMP yet, because they've been waiting for this deed to be registered.
So. And how we perceive of that, not knowing.
Don't. Wait till the thirtieth.
Okay.
Another reason to have them, we're gonna have to get those.
Okay. That makes sense. Alright, um. Lastly, six D, the cash receipt policy.
Just seemed like an easy one to throw in there and have you guys take a look at. I didn't even bother bringing it to the finance committee, because it's really something very internal that. I think the biggest change is, um, other bonded. Office staff.
Hmm.
Because it really limited. People like myself in an emergency or Emma being able to take something to the bank.
It was just the treasurer or deputy.
Right.
Yep. And I had to do a deep dive on the difference between insure, ensure and assure. They're all very close.
They are.
So.
Did I get it right? Did we get it right?
Yeah, I think, I think so. Uh, I do have a motion to approve the amendments to the cash receipts policy.
So move.
Move by Ben. Seconded by Tor, any other questions? That was an easy one. Alright, all in favor? I pass this four nothing. See what we want to now, oh, fiscal year warrant. Alright, do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty five twelve AP warrant in the amount of ten thousand dollars, nine hundred, well, ten thousand. Nine hundred and sixty two dollars and sixty eight cents.
Yes.
By Ben.
Yep, slightly.
Seconded by Tor, do you have any questions on that? Um, the only thing I wanted, do you have it with you, Kevin?
I do.
Um, I'm just, I think it would be helpful if um when we have. Like the Hager Enterprises charges to just know what projects they apply to.
Yes, they're in there, um. It was. Wasn't one, oh, because it's come out the next one.
Yeah, this was just a very little.
Three hundred thousand, three hundred and thirty seven dollars?
Which.
Was it, what was the amount, I'm sorry.
Uh, Hager was twenty eight hundred. Which is not much, I just, it made me just think in general to know. Cause that that's a small bill compared to most of them. You know, it would be helpful to know which project we're talking about.
So are you saying to like have a. The script here or something?
Yeah, just, right, or the.
Assign it to Capital Roads.
Just knowing which.
What's the number on the top of that?
Uh, zero eight nine seven.
No, the one, it's one oh seven. What your sign is is assigned to, I'm sorry, I'll pull it up.
Uh, one oh seven four three oh one. Well, I mean, there's a, there's a whole bunch of them listed there. I mean, it's not. This is not a mon, a big amount of money, so I'm not really worried concerned about this one, but just in general.
Okay.
You know, going forward, if we, if we can just know which project, it is would be helpful.
Sure.
No other questions? Right, um, all in favor? Alright, passes for nothing. Thank. To Kevin? Manager report?
Yeah, that. Moved away from it and now I'm.
I know, you're gonna get all the way back to the.
Uh, mentioned the planning board appointment, the additional information is in there about the uh. Now, new member of the planning board. Um, the VPI community survey, um. That's also up on in my packet with links to the website that takes you to the recording and. Ca- Catherine.
Catherine.
Caterina, thank you. As Kath- Caterina said, um, it is best to watch the video and get the context to help you understand some of the nuances that are in that survey. Um. That all the documents are also on the town's website, and there's a link on the manager report. The VPI, it's a project between Newcastle DOT, Wright Pierce, TY Lynn. Also, Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission has been helping facilitate those meetings. It's been a really good opportunity for all of these entities to get together. And start talking about, thinking about what could be done differently. What comes from this survey will, or the information that's collected from this survey will also be included to the engineers. So they can do a final presentation to this board, likely the second meeting in January, if not the first meeting in February, just because we want to be able to give them time. Um, we've had decent response here, we had a good turnout at the meeting on the nineteenth. Um, but uh, our our delay was the holidays until we got the survey out, we want to give. Both the residents some time to upload their information or thoughts. And we want to be able to get it to the engineers, they have time to make any modifications that they they glean from that information. Um, so I'm asking for residents to fill this out by Friday, this Friday, December thirteenth. Um, I do have a little wiggle room, if I don't get a good turnout or good response rate, I will probably push it a little bit longer, but. Right now, I'm trying to hold to the thirteenth, so I get that information out to them. Um. So it takes about ten or fifteen minutes to fill the survey out. There are a lot of visuals, it's Caterina also mentioned. There is, there are, there is one that takes a orientation shift, that's what she was referring to. Like one way you look at it, it's one design, and then it visually changes, and it's a different design, so it was a bit confusing for, I. Assume for some folks, so. If you have questions or concerns or issues, please reach out to me directly at town manager at newcastlemain.us. Uh, I also included a link to the story map that the Maine DOT safety initiatives just put out. Uh, what I gleaned from that was what we're trying to do to slow down traffic and make our downtown a walkable, safe. Environment with slower traffic coming through is exactly what their safety initiatives are. So I hope to use some of that information to help advocate for why our project, once this board says. We like X, Y, and Z, and this is what we're going to advocate for, I can go march to DOT and say, let's get on the work plan. Here, take this to your engineers to turn into an uh pro- proper project. Um, that is a ninety ten split, so, but it's probably three to five years before. It could be added to their work plan, but I'd like to get closer to that three year rather than that five or ten year timeframe. Um. Something else that came up was paid family and medical leave. The law got approved in twenty twenty three, they went through a whole lot of final rules, and they finally put the final rules out. Our town is in the, about. I think I I drafted the number here, it's about twenty, almost three thousand dollar bill, if. We include or if we include volunteer fire as part of that, and so we're still exploring it, but I just wanted you to be aware of it. I don't have it budgeted, we do have some in our fringe reserve for this type of issue. Uh, or, you know, again. Um, contingency or we can move money, but it's just something on the radar screen, we have to pay it in April, and I did not. Know what this was going to be, or even budget, I was able to budget for it last year, so it is an expense that the board will have to figure out how we absorb. Um. And, you know, I'd like to have a con- conversation in the personnel policy about. How this is going to get paid for, because it can't, you can shift half of a percent to the employee. Um. The CO, CEO position, I've been doing the interim since uh August. I'm burning out a little bit, but I I did, we did post it last. Week, no, it's Monday, so yes, it was last week, um. It's on our website, it's on Maine Municipal Association, it's on the job link, main job link. Um, there's a hiring event on Wednesday, which I'm going to go to over at the YMCA for two hours, hopefully, uh. You know, have conversations with folks who are looking for work in the area. Um, again, I'm not necessarily interested in finding someone who's got all of the CEO experience and and licenses, I'd rather. In this instance, bring somebody in, oh, I'd love for that to happen, but if I can't find that, I'm okay with. Bringing somebody on, now that I've done the work for four months, and and understanding the requirements of the job. Except for the licensed plumbing inspector, which George has still been doing for us, and I'll have him continue to do that until this person has the training that they are required to get. Um, I'd rather bring on somebody who's um. A good fit for our organization, works well with sta- our staff and the public, and can learn the code on 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 in that timeframe. So. Uh, we'll see what I can find and hopefully somebody applies, I'm looking, about twenty hours a week and um, that's I think where we'll start.
Is that an opportunity also for you to find, maybe find somebody for that, the grant?
It is, and I'm, yes, I have not posted that, uh, I have actually had a few conversations with some people who might be interested in it already. So, and it is just a temporary thing where I'm just trying to get some hours for somebody to go collect road data information and input it into our. MRS, M, RMS, no. Now, what is it, RSMS, there it is, RSMS system. Um, it's a start, it's a start in trying to um identify what our road priorities are or should be. Uh, and then uh. You know, warrant postings, uh, trying to build a base, and I want to, and I want to put out an official apology. Um, I know at the last meeting, uh, there was a little bit of a surprise that there was a uh. A name change on the, on the resident, I had uh. Worked with Emma to say we need to build a base and uh of of people, because when. Ben decided to go run and be on the select board, I no longer had a consistent person to be our resident who posted our town warrants. Um, and. Since I've been on board, I know we've done a handful of special town meetings to address some minor ordinance changes. And budget amendments when we need them, um, and I'd like to have a base of people that I can reach out to, because holiday time, you might not get, be able to get somebody, so. I had not informed the former uh individual of the change, and it's a public apology to Mike Titus.
Well, not former, he's just the other one.
The other one, the one, the one who did it last time.
Exactly.
Didn't do it this time, only because I'm trying to find, we're trying to find a few people to.
Yep.
Spread the wealth for cost or. Uh, and then lastly, holiday vacations, um, I'm I'm out starting September twenty third, and I'll be back in the off, December, what did I say? September.
You need a vacation.
Uh, yeah, I'll be out of the office starting December twenty third, not September. Uh, and I'll be back in the office on January, on Monday, January sixth.
Okay.
I will have my computer with me if something urgent comes up, but um. Pretty sure there's an intelligent group of people who work in the office who can handle most of the things, uh, and uh, I know. Other office staff are going to be staggering some hours, so it will be kind of a skeleton crew. Down there for for those two weeks, so if you, if there's anything urgent, please stop in, but if you can wait till after January. New Year's, um, that'd be beneficial to them too.
We'll all be drinking our eggnog.
Good.
All being sure. Alright, then do I have a motion to go into executive session under MRS? Four oh five point six point C, discussion of real property.
Yes.
So move.
By Ben.
Second.
Seconded by Tor, all in favor? Passes five nothing. Alright, no, here's the.